Good evening. We will call this Wednesday, April 24th, Killabala Hills Board of Commissioners meeting to order. And with that, I would ask if you would please join us in rise for the Fledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and to your republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If you would please join us for a moment of silence. Next, we will ask for the agenda approval.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signal as hang on.
Aye.
Okay. If you notice, if you come regularly or just review our agendas regularly, it's a little different tonight. We don't have the initial public comment time set aside because this is a public forum-type meeting. So we have a few items of business that we'll knock out and then we will open the floor to just the rest of the time together to hear from the public on any item you wish to bring forward to the board. So we'll move forward with our agendas as presented. We have two public hearings this evening that I will turn over to our attorney to conduct for us.
Thank you, Mayor. As Mayor said, there will be two public hearings tonight conducted by the Killabala Hills Board of Commissioners. The following rules of procedure will apply to these hearings. Public notice of each was published in a newspaper and posted on the town bulletin boards in accordance with the statutory requirements for the subject matter. Copy of the public notice has been filed with the town clerk for entry into the official record of the hearing. The town clerk shall report all oral comments in a concise and brief manner. Written statements shall be recorded in a similar manner and any part of the record of the hearing shall be submitted and forwarded to the town clerk. Please limit your comments to matters relevant to the issue and to a time period of three minutes. However, if you are speaking for a group, there shall be a five-minute exception made. All speakers must come to the microphone so that your statements can be taped. There will be no debates. And when you come forward, if you identify yourself and your address, it would be appreciated. All right. So the first public hearing will please come to order. This hearing is called for the purpose of the Killabala Hills Board of Commissioners to consider the following. An amendment to Chapter 153 dot 176, Commercial Zone Permitted Uses, and Chapter 153 dot 076D, Off-Street Parking and Loading, Table of Parking Requirements, to add brewery as a permitted use and create parking standard for brewery with secondary uses. The following individual has indicated they have a desire to speak. I have nobody for this particular public hearing that signed up. Is there anyone within the audience that would like to speak?
Discussion in the floor, for discussion in the floor. Comments and questions?
I think we discussed this before, I think, when I was on the planning board or when I was on this board.
Probably a little bit, but yeah. We discussed this briefly at our last meeting about scheduling this, so we had a little bit of discussion. Okay, then a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion. The Board of Commissioners finds that the amendments to Chapter 153, zoning 153.176, Commercial Zone Permitted Uses, and 153.076D, Off-Street Parking and Loading, Table of Parking Requirements slash to Add Brewery as Permitted Use and Create Parking Standard for Brewery with Secondary Uses are consistent with all of the comprehensive plans and other officially adopted plans of the Town of Killabala Hills and are applicable and that the amendment is reasonable in the public interest because, you know, falls in line with what else is going on? Oh, my bad. Because of the commercial zoning district and provides additional business opportunities. Thank you, Mayor.
Certainly. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signal as hang on.
Aye.
Any opinions?
The second public hearing will please come to order. This hearing is called for the purpose of the Board of Commissioners to consider the following. Amendment to Chapter 153 dot 101, Ocean Impact Residential Zone, A setback, five, reduce side yard setbacks to 10 feet for all cluster housing and cottage courts in the Ocean Impact Residential Zone. Because the applicant is the only one that has signed up.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Eddie Goodrich and I'm the advocate. Let me first start by addressing the memorandum from the Planning Department to the Town Manager in regards to my request. It says a couple of things that I somewhat disagree with, one of which is that cottage courts, cluster homes can also be considered multifamily under many circumstances, mainly the similarity in density. I disagree with that. I think this ain't correct. All of anyone that feels that way, it's not multifamily. If you really want to talk about multifamily, it means multiple families, and multiple families are the kind of people that rent 20 and 25-bedroom houses. There's no concession for lot coverage, there's no concession for lot coverage in cluster housing and cottage courts. There's no concession for height. There's no concession for parking. So there's no increase in density whatsoever, if anything, in the load density. For some reason, at the planning board level, staff brought up the fact that what I'm asking for may be illegal according to the town attorney. Now, I don't know if he's had a chance to look at that yet, but I seriously doubt if it's illegal or we wouldn't be here today. Some reason, I don't really know where that came from. One other thing that was brought up by staff is that structure size is an arbitrary point. We know legitimacy because there are no regulations regarding size. In fact, it states very clearly in the cluster housing and cottage court ordinance that the houses cannot exceed 2,500 square feet in size. So you're basically talking about a 400-bedroom house. My reason for requesting the reduction in setbacks is simple math. If you take a 100-foot wide lot and you take 12 feet on both sides, you have 76 feet. 20 feet is what's in the ordinance, but it can be reduced if the fire department agrees, fire marshal, that is, they have more than by the help. So 16 feet is practical because two cars can pass and the houses will then be sprinkled for fire protection. So basically, then you have 30 feet to build a cottage courthouse or a cluster house. And it's almost impossible for a normal car with a turning radius to turn and park under the house without having the backup. And one of the primary things that I think are good about cottage courts and cluster housing is that it eliminates the 25 cars or more that you see parked out front of the larger houses. I don't have a problem with the larger houses. I think they serve their purpose. It's obvious, or they wouldn't be built. But I think parking being under the house is a lot more attractive. And finally, I'm really not asking you to do anything that you're not doing already because the side yard setback for cluster housing and cottage courts in the commercial zone is already 10 feet. And the side yard setback on a 50-foot wide lot for a 25-bedroom house or more is already 10 feet. So I'm simply asking it to be for consistency, in fact, that cottage courts and cluster housing, the side yard setback could be 10 feet, like it is in the commercial zone and like it is on a 50-foot wide lot where you can build a 25-bedroom house. I'll take any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Eddie. Any questions?
I got a question. Early on when we were having this discussion, you know, we went through the math and I thought that time you said that it would fit if you went to a 16-foot drive-off. The other thing, the question is, have you ever, I mean, do you have a drawing of this that kind of shows what you're describing? The turn radius for the driveway and all that is what I'm curious about.
I don't have a sketch, but there are cottage courts that, there's a couple that have been built, one particular one in Max Head on the oceanfront, that it's almost impossible to get under the house. And I mean, people, you know, obviously, as people drive trucks and they drive everything else, but a typical car, and I don't know, Mike, can you give any insight? Mike's one, he does a lot of engineering for it. I didn't ask him to come tonight to offer anything, but is it practical for a typical car to be able to get under the house or difficult?
You typically need at least an 18-foot drive-off to be able to make a turn, get up underneath the house.
I mean, I'd be glad to get some sketches and come back to you if you want to see them.
I'm just trying to establish how you determine that without, you know, you just saying it's one thing, but if we, if we actually saw it, it might make a big difference in my mind.
I don't have any sketches with me, but I know that it's, like I said, there's a particular one building in Max Head on a 100-foot wide lot with eight-foot setbacks, it's almost impossible to get under the house without backing up the back.
You said there's a 100-foot lot as well?
It is.
And eight-foot setbacks?
Yes. Well, I mean, it takes a certain amount of room to turn a car around. You can get a car under there, but it's not going to be easy. It's not going to be easy to get out. And quite frankly, again, I'm not asking for anything that you're not doing already. The setback is 10 feet between, in the commercial zone, the setback for a 25-bedroom house is 10 feet. And these houses will have to be sprinkled, which is more important than anything else because in building cluster houses, cottage courts, you're building individual units rather than a wall, which is basically what you're looking at when you build a 25-bedroom house.
Any questions?
Personally, I've been opposed to the cluster homes, and I want to make them worse. I just, you know, it's hard to mentally picture what you're saying. I mean, you could have some way to establish that fact, that it's hard to get under there.
I don't have any sketches with me, but I know it's quite difficult. It's almost impossible. You can, obviously, you can get a car under the house, but it's not going to be easy.
I like the concept as well of the cluster, 95. What was the question about the legal issue? I'd like to give a little more.
So, and I'm glad Eddie brought it up. I was going to myself, so I knew it was in my, when I first took a look, my real concern was, is there any inequality amongst surrounding properties? Are we, do we have a rational basis for what's going on? Those are typically elements you face in a spot zoning scenario, for example. So I had spot zoning on my mind when I first, and I just to get due diligence. Now, spot zoning would not apply. Okay, I don't want that to be known. That's not, that's where my head was originally, but spot zoning ultimately is going to require an actual change in land use. You're favoring, you know, giving, changing a residential in the middle of a residential zone, you make one small parcel commercial, and then now you have a gas station in the middle of subdivision. That's an extreme example, but that would be spot zoning. Now, the principles that apply here and that the board's going to have to consider tonight ultimately are, in any and every zoning amendment change that you make, you have to have a rational basis. You have to have support and you have to have justification. If you do not, then it's tactically potentially indefensible. So it's what you want to avoid. You want to avoid opening up. People say that at hearings all the time about opening up doors and things of that nature for people to come in and make applications that have to be now approved. Well, I mean, that's in the future. That's not really something that has to be considered. But for this particular here, is there any inequality amongst this use in the surrounding property? Or not use, I'm sorry, between this amendment, how this would allow this particular property to be treated as compared to surrounding properties? And is it consistent with the land use plan? If you can provide a rational basis and a justification, finding the fact that you will, as to why those elements and that rational basis is met, then you would be entitled to uphold the purpose. Otherwise, you're in a scenario where you perhaps don't have a strong position to support why you were to order a change. So that's just the elements that need to be, that need to be kept in mind. But I do want to make it a point. My initial, it was spot zoning, this is not coming into play, so I don't want there to be any discrepancy that can be hanged town attorney's spot zoning when it doesn't apply.
I would say that requiring a 12-foot setback for cottage courts and cluster housing, which are limited to 2,500 square feet, and a 10-foot setback for 25-bedroom houses is an inequality. I'd say about the same, you're having a larger setback for smaller structures is an inequality.
Well, I think, one of the things that's important for us, and Meredith, you might add to this, to recognize is we are talking about the ocean impact, which is our most restrictive and protected according to our land use plan and our most recent land use survey. So I think that's where the challenge comes into the board. If we're going to change restrictions to our most restricted and decide upon through consistent surveys and feedback from the public in our adopted plan, that's where we come into conflict.
Meredith, I think it's also important to clarify the setbacks and what my memorandum says. Our setbacks in the Ocean Impact Residential Zone are based on the width of the lot. They're based on the width of the lot because the size of the lot can change because of the ocean. And the lot width is 75 feet or less is a 10-foot setback, 75, 76 and up is a 12-foot setback. There's no inequality there. Everybody that's got a 76 linear foot lot will have a 12-foot setback, whether it's residential, multifamily, hotel motel, cluster development. Anything 75 or lower has a 10-foot setback. The reason my memorandum points out that we can't use the size of the development as a justification is we don't regulate the size of houses. So if someone can build a 25-bedroom house on a 50-foot wide lot, their setbacks are 10. If someone were to build a 25-foot house on a 76-foot lot, wide lot, the setbacks are 12. It's based on the lot size, not the development type, because we do not regulate the size of the structures. Therefore, that can't be a justification for why a large house on a 50-foot lot has a 10-foot and a large house on a 76-foot wide lot has a 12-foot. They're not, they're not argumentable because we don't regulate size. That same 25-bedroom house could also be a 4-bedroom house on a 50-foot wide lot. That's up to the developer's preference. The other thing I want to point out is talking about the turn radius and things like that. There's nothing in any of these amendments that requires parking under these houses. Nothing here is preventing the parking in front, just like the large houses that we have right now. There's no guarantee that parking is underneath these houses. There's nothing in the regulations that requires it to be under the house, and there's nothing that, in any of our regulations, it requires under-house parking. So that, although that is the goal, the second thing is a site plan. This is for the whole OIR. This is not just for a development that a particular client is working on and his vision for what he wants a cluster house or his cluster house to look like. It's for anybody who may come in in the future to build a cluster house. And that turn radius and parking under the house is not a requirement for cluster homes at this time. It's not in our ordinance. So it's a desire of this developer, but it is not a regulatory requirement. And so therefore, it's difficult to consider when you're looking at an amendment unless that parking was absolutely required under the house, and then you may have a different justification for why things need to change. But that is not a requirement. So when staff looked at this, we looked at what the regulatory requirements were, not what the developer desired to build, and said, this is an arbitrary amendment. Why are cottage courts different than a multifamily or a hotel or a single-family dwelling built on a lot that's 75 linear feet in width or more? And that justification did not come, we were unable to obtain that justification that this is a different, this is special, this has got some, something in it that we need to make a concession for, this is defensible legally, therefore, that's why staff's recommended denial of the agreement. Is that too much to ask?
If I might?
Sure, yeah, please, Eddie.
There's no such thing as a 76-foot wide lot. There's no such thing as a 99-foot wide lot. This whole town on the oceanfront primarily was set aside 50 years ago, and they're all 50-foot wide lots. You either have a 50-foot wide lot, a lot and a half, two lots, which is 100 feet. What you are having to deal with is the fact that this whole town, the oceanfront is set aside in 50-foot wide lots. And you have to work within that structure. We can't just cut lot, we just can't make a lot any size we want. They're already, oh, right, they're already recorded, and they're already 50-foot wide. So you either have a 50-foot wide lot, you have a lot and a half that you see from time to time, once in a while, but generally speaking, they're all 50-foot wide, so you either buy 50, 100, 150, or 200. And that was going long, that was before there was even the Town of Killabala Hills, and that's what you have to deal with now. And we're also trying to create cottage courts, which were created 50-something, before there ever was a town. So the way to order trees, 76-foot wide, a wider lot, 99-foot wider lot, there is no such thing.
Madam Mayor, we have a subdivision ordinance that allows for you to create any size lot as long as it's 15,000 square feet, so you can take any combination of lots into a subdivision and create any lot width that you so desire as long as the total lot area is 15,000 square feet.
I disagree because if you have two 50-foot wide lots and you make one 60-foot wide, the other lot 40-foot wide, and you cannot do that in this town.
All right. No debates. So let's end it on that one.
I think in my mind, I'm trying to balance two things. One, you know, one of the big outcry's in our town is people, generally speaking, don't like the large homes. So this is an alternative that we've been looking for to maybe have some incentive for people to do the smaller homes or a lot, because firstly, I think it's more aesthetically pleasing, and we've given them the right to do it. I'm just trying to decide how far you go with giving them the tools to make it, to incentivize doing that instead of a large home. So that's, I think that's why I'm looking for the justification. You know, I really liked a lot the idea of cluster homes, and I have quite some time. I think most people prefer the look at them, so if we give them a way to do it, but we don't have the tools to do it or the incentive to do it, then I'm afraid we won't see them in place of the large homes. So I'm just trying to balance that in my mind, I think. From one thing you said, I guess we can't, it'd be too messy to tie it to, okay, we'll reduce a lot setback if you do park under the house. That's, I guess that's getting a little too messy to legally adopt.
That's a different amendment. It's not what's been requested, and that you would have to...
Is it a possibility?
Deal with this one, and then if the applicant would like to reapply with further restrictions for reduced setbacks, something that you could consider.
But you could tie it to that if you really, if the town wanted to.
I caution you that you may be limiting other developers if your desire is to do cottage courts and you require them to build a certain way. You might not be, you might be promoting one project over what other people's vision may be in the future if they're required to form a certain look.
If you built a large home and you wanted to reduce a setback, it would incentivize parking under the structure as well, right? I mean, I don't think now we'd do a lot with that, there'd be more homes.
I don't, I don't know how you're joining, I don't know what we're joining here. Are you, are you talking about incentivizing parking under the house for everything in the OIR?
Possibly.
We have an incentive to park underneath for multifamily, and they get, they get an additional, their top plate could be 42 rather than 35, and that's the incentive that we've offered to multifamily for parking underneath. Some have taken advantage, some did not. We do not have any other parking requirements.
So Meredith, let me ask you this. Correct me if I'm wrong, but under our current ordinance, there's nothing to stop anyone from building a cottage court or some cluster homes under the current ordinance. The issue here is that the type of development that the applicant would like doesn't fit. If you changed the plan for the cottage court, it would fit under our current circumstances, correct? Because they are allowed.
We currently, the board has adopted cottage courts in the, not only cottage courts, but cluster homes, which is generally an ownership thing, in the OIR and commercial zone. So they are currently allowed by ordinance in both the commercial zone and in the Ocean Impact Residential Zone.
So if we deny this request, we're not stopping anybody from doing any, doing cottage courts, we're just saying that they can't change the setbacks?
Yes, sir.
I like to, I like the idea of cottage courts and I'd like to see them come to fruition, but when I was looking at this, I just thought back to the land use survey, not just the most recent one in previous years, but it's been pretty uniform feedback from our citizens that they don't want houses to be digger or anything, they'd like to have more space of the ocean from Highway 12, and I haven't got, I'm not in favor of changing the setbacks if they're the way, if they're good the way they are now.
Any other questions?
The only other thing, you know, I would say that I favor the cottage courts. I think that they're better than the large homes like Commissioner Jones had stated, and I think that that was one of the things that I heard as a major outcry during the last election was that people didn't want to see the large homes. And to me, this is a way that you could probably, you know, not have that. I'm still not sold on the reduction either, and I'd like to see it work as well, but I don't know how to make you do that.
Well, I mean, I think it's important to note, this board was unanimous in its support for adopting the amendments to, the changes to allow the cottage courts and cluster homes. So there's definitely no opposition for that from a conceptual perspective. This just, it strikes a chord with some of us because it's not consistent with the land use plan, and that's really hard. That's really one of our governing documents in making our decisions. So it is the way it is now. It's not ambiguous and it's not inconsistent with the way ours is. Any other discussion, comments, questions? Anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. The Board of Commissioners finds that the amendments to 153.101, Ocean Impact Residential Zone, A setback slash five, reduce the side yard setback to 10 feet for all cluster housing and cottage courts in the OIR are inconsistent with all the comprehensive plans and other officially adopted plans of the Town of Killabala Hills that are applicable, and that this amendment is unreasonable in the public interest because it is inconsistent with the objectives and policies contained in the Killabala Hills Land Use Plan and other officially adopted plans for town that are applicable.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Check.
Any other discussion? I hope the clarification of motion is denied, is approved.
Denied, correct.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor of, um, the motion, please signal by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
Like forty-five.
Thank you for your time, Eddie. We will move on now to, um, the first item under Introductions and Presentations. And welcome, Dave Pala, Superintendent of the Cape Hatteras National Seashore here. Welcome, Dave.
Thank you. Mayor Davies, Commissioners, thank you for having me here this evening, and I'll try to be brief. I know you have a lot of citizens here who want to participate in public forum. So it's my pleasure to provide you with an overview of the year twenty-eighteen for the Outer Banks Group, which includes Cape Hatteras Seashore, Fort Raleigh National Historic Site, and Wright Brothers Memorial, right behind you here. And you'll notice, actually, if you look carefully in that last photo, that, uh, Mayor Davies is cutting the ribbon of the Wright Brothers National Historic Landmark Visitor Center, which we did on October twentieth. It was a great day, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in a few moments. Real quick review, the three parks, uh, span, including the distance between Wright Brothers and the tip of Ocracoke, almost a hundred miles, uh, but, uh, we have about four-hundred-and-fifty acres on Northern Roanoke Island at Fort Raleigh, about four-hundred-and-fifty acres behind us at Wright Brothers, and a seventy-mile-long Cape Hatteras Seashore starting in South Nags Head, going to the tip of Ocracoke Island, which is also partly in Hyde County. Last year was absolutely incredible. We had almost three-point-two-million visits to the three parks. We had over seventy-eight thousand overnight stays at our campgrounds. We have four campgrounds, Oregon Inlet, Cape Point, Frisco, and one on Ocracoke. Uh, we do all this with about eighty staff, uh, we bring in about a hundred seasonal staff every summer. We have an incredible volunteer corps, many of which are very dedicated to Wright Brothers Memorial. There are days, there are hours, there are weeks, in which the visitor center behind you is mostly staffed by volunteers. And we're really, really lucky to have them. They're knowledgeable, they're hardworking, uh, and they really improve the visitor experience in all the parks. Uh, we have five visitor centers in the parks, as you may be aware of, uh, one here, one at Fort Raleigh, at the Body Island Lighthouse, Cape Hatteras Lighthouse, and on Ocracoke. We have a lot of other stuff we take care of, the details aren't too important to anybody but my Chief of Maintenance, uh, including three airstrips here with one right behind the, the building. Uh, we do all this on a budget of just over fifteen million dollars. Congress has been very generous and provided us with about ten million dollars of funding annually. We bring in almost another three million dollars in off-road vehicle permit funds, and, uh, we bring in about another two-and-a-half million dollars in camping fees, uh, lighthouse climbing fees, and entrance fees at Wright Brothers. So visitation trends, uh, not really a lot going on at Fort Raleigh, other than the take-home messages that we typically have about a quarter million to three-hundred thousand visitors at Fort Raleigh. We are down a touch, but within the normal range of visitation. Wright Brothers was actually down a fair amount, almost thirteen percent versus the year twenty-seventeen. We attribute that to the visitor center being closed, uh, but I can't say exactly what the cause was. If you're wondering what that large spike is in two thousand and three, that was the centennial celebration. Cape Hatteras Seashore continues to see a lot of growth. It may not seem like much between twenty-fourteen and twenty-eighteen there, but we actually increased our visitation, almost four-hundred thousand visitors. So we have now broken the two-and-a-half million visitation mark. This is the highest level of visitation in fifteen years, it was quite a year. Interestingly, our visitation to Ocracoke specifically from Hatteras, so that's within the seashore, has been declining, most likely because the ferry route is longer and there are fewer ferry trips. And, uh, just some other interesting facts, the year twenty-eighteen was warm and rainy. All of those bars you see on the graph above the zero line represent minimum and maximum temperatures that were well above the thirty-year average. You see there, all those bars are going up with the exception of pretty much January. I think everybody remembers how cold of a January it was. But this is fairly typical, we're now seeing most years that our minimum and maximum temperatures are well above the thirty-year average of temperatures. The bottom graph shows rainfall, precipitation, uh, and it was truly mostly precipitation. And you see, uh, anything that hits that dash line is a hundred percent of the average of the thirty years. Uh, and the bar all the way on the right-hand side is for the year, and that shows about a hundred and fifty percent of average rainfall. So it was pretty rainy overall. That big bar in the middle is July. It was so rainy that I have to show you a second graph. And, uh, on that graph, this is rainfall in this area for, since nineteen fifty-seven, for the month of July. So if you're wondering, how much, how much does it typically rain in the month of July? It's between five and ten inches, on average is probably about seven inches. And prior to last July in nineteen ninety-eight, we had ten-point-eight-five inches, that was the record. July of twenty-eighteen, twenty-point-three inches. And, you know, it's an interesting topic because I know the town deals with drainage issues sometimes as well. Nags Head certainly has a lot of challenges there, but it's very, very hard when we have extreme rain events like this at the seashore and in all the parks to try to manage for it, because there's really no way to have drainage systems and have infrastructure that can extend, uh, or withstand extremes that you haven't seen happen ever since you've been keeping records. But we seem to be seeing more and more of these extreme events, whether they're rainfall events, or wind events, or high tides. Uh, visitor engagement, we have a really large education program. Uh, last year we put on, uh, about twenty-five-hundred programs. We had over seventy-five thousand visitors at the programs, and we graduated almost eight thousand junior rangers. And you'll notice that the majority of those junior rangers, uh, graduated right behind you at Wright Brothers Memorial. Uh, off-road vehicle use at the seashore still is very popular. As a matter of fact, it was more popular in twenty-eighteen than we've ever seen before. Since we started our permit program, we sold over forty-one thousand off-road vehicle permits. The numbers are climbing every year. I have to believe that they're probably stabilizing at this point, but, uh, it's just not clear yet. And we have a lot of beach open. Uh, don't worry too much about these numbers, except for the fact that we're seeing in recent years, meaning twenty-seventeen and twenty-eighteen, that about twenty-seven out of a maximum of twenty-nine miles of drivable beach are open. So more than ninety percent of the beaches are open for driving during the summer. Yet, we're still able to protect wildlife, which is one of the special things about the seashore. Uh, I want to talk to you about some of the challenges that we're having, that certainly, uh, all of the towns are having pretty much on the coast of, of the eastern United States. This is an old image in South Nags Head, and you see four houses on the left of this image here. The, uh, uh, second house, sort of on the beach there, uh, those houses were built in the late fifties. This is a nineteen fifty-seven photograph. You see a beautiful set of dunes behind the backyard and a nice wide beach, and there's a shipwreck there. That's the shipwreck of Alora Barnes. And I want to show you this, uh, because this is what the situation looks like today. This was Winter Storm Riley in March of twenty-eighteen. And we are facing this type of situation up and down Cape Hatteras Seashore, from Nags Head to Rodanthe, in between Avon and Buxton, between Frisco and Hatteras, all along Highway twelve on Ocracoke Island. This is a problem that's been getting worse and worse and worse. We have to move these houses that you see here because they're just simply not sustainable, even with beach nourishment projects that are occurring in Nags Head up the road. So, um, I don't know what the solution is to all of these problems, but I can tell you that, uh, we have to start thinking very differently about the way that we do things at the seashore. Hurricane Florence had quite an impact, this shows the impacts of some of our parking lots that were torn apart down in Frisco. And I'll, I'll want to show you just how dramatic some of the erosion is that we're seeing. And we see this erosion, some of the highest rates actually in Nags Head. I don't know if you're measuring erosion rates in Kill Devil Hills, but I, I recommend, uh, doing that if, if you have the ability to do so. Uh, this is the north end of Ocracoke Island, and this is an image from two thousand and three, spring of two thousand and three. Okay, so, uh, six years ago approximately, it's, it's actually April. When I came to the seashore four years ago, I would go out onto this beach here. It was fifty acres of beautiful sand flats, gorgeous beach, it was important for wildlife, heavily visited by our visitors. And if you're wondering what that little writing is in the upper right-hand corner, that says South Dock, that's where the ferry comes to from Hatteras, just to orient you. This is what the, the north part of that island looks like today. And it looked like it did in that last photograph for decades. We're having massive, massive levels of erosion. This is actually what South Dock looks like. The road, uh, used to have dunes and a beach in front of it, and the strong, uh, ebb currents, the tidal currents flowing out of the inlet here are rapidly eroding the entire north side of this island. Some other challenges that we have, here's a great image, aerial image of Wright Brothers Memorial. And we were in this room about a year ago, we had a fire education, uh, meeting, wildland fire, uh, meeting. There are still, uh, thankfully, some large natural areas in Dare County. And of the four-hundred-and-fifty acres at Wright Brothers, there's a lot of undeveloped forested land. We do some clearing of vegetation around the boundaries, but you can tell there are many housing communities right up against this interface, we call it the wildland-urban interface. And we're really looking for your assistance on trying to get the message out, on getting homeowners to clear fuels that are right next to their house, in some cases touching their homes, as far away from their house as practical. We don't want to ruin the aesthetic landscape here, but there's a very high level of risk associated with having wood, woody vegetation mulch right up against your homes. And that both puts the park areas and the natural areas at risk from fires that can spread from the urban interface, and also puts many of these neighborhoods at risk if a fire were to start at Wright Brothers as an example. So, uh, we're looking for, uh, your help in trying to get this message out about creating what we would call fire-wise landscape. This is the National Historic Landmark Wright Brothers Visitor Center, shortly after it was built in nineteen sixty. We spent two years renovating it, it was definitely a challenging project, uh, but we got through it all. We have brand-new exhibits, a completely renovated building from top to bottom. The building is in better shape today than it was the day that it was built. I think we finally have a building that doesn't have a roof leak, and it leaked the day that it was built. So it's very, very exciting. Uh, on the twentieth of October, I had the great pleasure of welcoming, these are actually fourth graders from Dare County, back into the visitor center. I can assure you they enjoyed it, and are, we're getting great reviews from our visitors. Uh, so I hope if you haven't had a chance to come see the new visitor center, please come by, we would love to have you, and I think you'll enjoy it. Our wildlife species are doing quite well, uh, at the seashore. Don't worry too much about this, other than to know that we have a trend that has been going up over the last fifteen or so years when it comes to sea turtle nesting, and that's a great thing. We have a lot of protected birds at the seashore as well. This is a really beautiful bird called the American oyster catcher. Kids love this bird, it looks like a bird with a, uh, an orange nose and a tuxedo, that's what we refer to it as. And the numbers have gone up and down, but we had quite a few nests and quite a few fledglings in twenty-eighteen. This is the inside of the Wright Brothers Visitor Center on July twentieth in nineteen sixty-nine. This is the year that my parents were born, it's their fifty-year anniversary, and it also is the fifty-year anniversary of the lunar landing. All of these folks are watching the United States of America land on the moon. Really, really exciting day, and we had televisions set up at Wright Brothers for the public to watch. And you can see there were, it was a packed house inside, and even outside the visitor center, you see all those folks there. So a little sneak peek, on July twentieth of this summer, we're going to have some events to celebrate the fiftieth anniversary of the lunar landing. We will be rebroadcasting the event, we'll be partnering with many folks, and we'd love to partner with you to celebrate this great day. Uh, another thing about this summer, this is the twentieth anniversary of the Cape Hatteras Lighthouse move. Every day now, we have a special talk at the lighthouse about the move, and we'll be having some special events in July as well. I hope you can come down and see them. I'm also very, very excited, uh, yesterday with the Chamber of Commerce, I had an opportunity to help cut a ribbon to celebrate the launch of a new organization called Outer Banks Forever. Outer Banks Forever is a friends group to the Outer Banks Group, the three national parks here in Darren Hyde County. They are our new philanthropic partners. So they are going to help us achieve a margin of excellence when it comes to educating our visitors, providing great visitor experiences, implementing great science and research projects, and really enhancing the parks. I'm also happy to introduce Jessica Green, who's in the back here. She's the new director, and Jess has done a great job, uh, getting to know the community. She's building a board of directors, and I hope you have a chance to meet her and, and learn more about how you can support Cape Hatteras, Wright Brothers, and Fort Raleigh in the future. That's all I have, I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Great presentation, Dave. Questions or comments?
I do. Are we allowed to comment or ask a question or not?
Go ahead.
Sir, do you, are we monitoring, uh, the rise in sea level? Is your department, are we as a, a county, uh, monitoring the rise in sea level? We're all aware of the erosion problems that we've dealt with forever. Is there any actual, uh, scale that we're looking at in the rise of sea level in this, in the ocean and the sand?
Great question, so the answer is yes. Uh, there are two long-term tidal gauges that measure water levels. One of them is at the Duck Pier up the road here, it's an Army Corps of Engineers pier. The second tide gauge is down at Oregon Inlet, and you can, if you have a, a computer, Google "sea level rise in Oregon Inlet", and they will show you a graph. And of course, it goes up and down like crazy, but you can see the long-term trend. Generally speaking, the rate of sea level rise between the Duck Pier and Oregon Inlet is about three-point-six to four-and-a-half millimeters per year over the last fifty years. That's a lot. And, uh, the projections are that sea level will continue to go up anywhere between two and ten inches in the next thirty years. That's based on a report from the state of North Carolina. So there are gauges that are out there, and the data are publicly available, and I'd be happy to, uh, help you get that if you need it.
Yeah, no problem. With the, uh, the houses that you showed us in Nags Head, with the, uh, water coming across and, and reaching everything, do you attribute the rise of sea level to that, a, a lot of that, or, or, or just the, the dunes moving, or what?
Uh, I don't. I'm sure sea level rise probably exacerbates the erosion that we see on the Outer Banks, but I think it's fairly well-known that barrier islands are not meant to be fixed in place like we've done. Uh, as a matter of fact, the Civilian Conservation Corps built about six-hundred miles of sand fencing to build all of the dunes that you see, pretty much in the Outer Banks from here to the tip of Ocracoke Island. And those dunes essentially fix the islands, a natural barrier island will have sand that washes over and deposits the sand in the back, and the island will shift back and forth, and usually migrate westward. Because we fix the islands the way they have, we have a very high rate of erosion, and I believe that we would probably have a higher rate of erosion even without sea level rise.
Yes, sir. Uh, one more question.
Well, can I, just so we can move forward with the rest of our agenda, we have a lot of people here for the public comment time. Maybe you guys could follow up offline?
I'll give you my contact information, I'd be happy to talk to you.
That's awesome, thank you so much. Any comment from the board?
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on with our next, um, presentation, and welcome Roxanna Ballinger and Ashley Bain, um, from the, from the Department of Health and Human Services, and they're going to give us an update on the Saving Lives Task Force, um, and the personal response team pilot for Kill Devil Hills. Welcome.
Hello, um, I'm Ashley Bain, I'm with the Health Department, thank you for letting me speak to you guys tonight. We started this response team pilot, uh, back in September of last year of twenty-eighteen, and I'm here tonight to give an update. Um, the goals of our response team is to reduce, um, overdose deaths and repeated incidents of overdose. And we're trying to do this by reaching the vulnerable population. And we partnered with the Town of Kill Devil Hills for this, uh, pilot project, and we also partnered with the Sheriff's Office. Uh, we're trying to reach these individuals and, and link them to services and, and treatment, and reduce their barriers for seeking treatment. Uh, we're doing this in three different ways. One way is that we're doing it is to respond to, um, overdose reversals by law enforcement and AMFs. What, what's happening with the count, the Town of Kill Devil Hills is, uh, when there's an overdose reversal, Dana's informing me of that, and I try to, uh, reach those individuals face-to-face within a twenty-four to seventy-two hours. And, um, link them to services, give them the Roxone kit, um, teach them, uh, safer ways to use, uh, things of that nature. Since we started doing this, I've been notified as nine overdose reversals by AMS and law enforcement, excuse me. Seven of them have been in Kill Devil Hills, and two others have been in, uh, other Sheriff's, Sheriff's Office jurisdictions. Um, one in seven of those individuals sought treatment, um, after their overdose. Uh, one in seven, uh, refused to see me face-to-face. Uh, four of those seven had, uh, recently been in treatment, or, um, have currently, um, or were already in treatment and, and returned to use. With this... With this crowd, I've given out 10 the lock zone kits, 10 fentanyl test strips, and I've had 12 face-to-face meetings. We're expanding this part of our project to the town of Mania, to Duck, Southern Shores, and Naxhead, we've met with all them, and they've agreed to either tell me of overdose reversals in their towns, or tell Dana, because everyone loves Dana, and Dana will then in turn tell me about it. Another piece of this response team is, we have a number that individuals can call me to help link to services, and we also do some jail-in reach. I go and speak to individuals who have an upcoming release date, who have some substance use charges, and try to help them transition back into our community and link them to services. With that, we've had 22 other individuals who've received some sort of support service from our response team. I've had five transports to detox and treatment since October. Two individuals that were in the detention center were scheduled for treatment on their release date from the detention center, to try to limit that time while they're still wanting to make some changes and contemplate that. And this crowd has taken up most of my time, or most of our response team time, with 50 face-to-face meetings at least, and multiple texts and phone calls and things of that nature. Some of the challenges I've encountered while I've been doing this, a lot of people aren't ready for treatment. People do seem ready for overdose instruction, how to better use without overdosing, wanting the lock zone kits, things of that nature, which is an improvement, but a lot of people aren't ready for treatment. A lot of people that I encounter, they lack ID and insurance, but that doesn't mean that they're not eligible for treatment. There's plenty of places in North Carolina that will treat individuals without ID and without insurance. Oftentimes, there's not beds available in our detox centers, or they're not available in a timely fashion, sometimes it can take up to a week how many people in there who are ready. Inadequate housing and living arrangements, particularly for those who are being released from incarceration. I know that happens everywhere, I'm not sure how we're going to solve that problem. And ultimately, a lack of hope and trust with this crowd has been challenging. Other things that we've done since this effort started, we did receive a significant grant back in November that supports this project for 10 months. The best thing about this grant, other than the money, was the great collaborative effort by a lot of people, including Roxanna and Sheila, they worked many years to build relationships with people who were involved in this fight, and it really came to fruition. Kurt over there behind the TV, he wrote the whole evaluation piece for our grant quickly, and Dana wrote a letter of preference, so without these individuals, I don't think we would have received this money, so it's been a great effort by a whole lot of people. This grant has allowed us to do a lot of training, and it's also allowed us to support Dare County Syringe Exchange Program at Source Church. In addition to the Health Department buying supplies for the syringe exchange, this grant also gives them a stipend every month to run the syringe exchange, they've been doing this for free for a few years. So they're now getting a little bit of a stipend, that's Pastor Frank and Pastor Rob Flowers. The training has, we've had over 13 people, particularly members of our recovery community have attended training. This particular one was peer support specialist training, it was in Greenville for a week. Myself and another coworker took three members of our recovery community here who have experienced incarceration, who have experienced addiction, and these individuals are willing to share their stories in our community and help others, and this training was to teach them how to do that effectively. There are some job opportunities here for certified peer support specialists at Two Dreams, Room at the End, and there may be some others in the future. This crowd really wants to talk to people who have that shared lived experience, and oftentimes, it's not people with a bunch of letters after their name, it's people who've walked in their shoes, and these individuals have done that. Other trainings, Kurt and I went to a post overdose response team training, wish I got a picture of that, because Kurt was wearing a suit, and that was definitely something to see. I've gone to another conference where a member of our recovery community was asked to speak at the General Assembly, that was interesting to say the least, and recently went to a training with six of us who do jail-in reach at Dare County Detention Center, so we can better understand how to serve individuals who are being released back into our community. With the grant money, we're also doing a recovery library at Dare County Detention Center. We're going to have books in there on adverse childhood experiences, addiction research, recovery stories, other self-help books that individuals who are being housed at our detention center can have access to while they're there, because that's one of the few things that they do in the detention center, is they read, read, read. Thank you, questions?
Thank you, Ashley. Questions, comments?
I recently attended one of their events, over in Mania, who well-received, a lot of good information I enjoyed, very, very good program.
Question, once this program started with pilots in Kill Devil Hills, did word spread and it organically spread beyond our town, or did things kind of, people seeking you out and needed help, just from what they heard from their peers?
I'll say, when I responded to the last overdose that was here in Kill Devil Hills, the person knew I was coming, like, and knew it was going to be me, and was waiting for me to come see him. The others, it's kind of been a little surprise to them. So I don't know if word is spreading about the overdose response piece. As far as people who call the number to ask to help link them to services, that hasn't been a whole lot of people who have called, but you know if they call, they're actually seeking some sort of help. But the phone is not as busy as I thought it would be, and I don't know if that's because word isn't out that it exists, or people aren't ready, I have no answers for that.
Ashley, thank you for what you're doing, it's a tough job, but we really appreciate what you do for those in our county and certainly in Kill Devil Hills.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ash.
We will move on to Commissioner's agenda. Commissioner Gray, stuff for us this evening?
I did, and I try to keep it as brief as I can, as far as what I have to present. With, I've been working with Mary, and we have surveyed a lot of the West Side Recreation facilities, as a matter of fact, we have about eight items that we've gone through. And each of these items, the staff has put together a survey of the item, possibilities. I shared with Commissioner Hogan, he had previously worked on a lot of these facilities. They include a fully accessible walkway at the former Ocean Acres Westport Treatment Plant Site, Copley Drive Park, Aviation Park, and they surveyed all of these different items that are listed in this program. What I wanted to do was bring this to the board for discussion, and let the board look at it and decide how we wanted to proceed. There's actually three ways that we can go forward with this. We can send it to the planning board for their review, let them look at it, or we can send it to the Street Improvements Committee, which has a special projects committee portion that could review it, or we could establish a new committee for specific review and input on usage and improvements of the West Side recreational facilities. I personally am in favor of the third option, which would be to select a committee, or form a committee, to review this, and then once they come up with the possibilities and make a recommendation, then it would go to the planning board to make sure that it matches with all the other, you know, plans with the town. But this would be a program that you could look at and make policy decisions from the board level, once it actually came back to us, and realize certain discussions that would need to be had. I think there's an opportunity that we could get public involved with it as far as public input. We'd need to have discussions on the limited staffing that the town has, and being able to put this program together. And it would be certain things that we could develop, like for example, Rockon. We would be able to mimic what they do at Doughty Park in Naxhead, and have a program where we have different activities and festivities that go on there. And I just wanted to bring this to the board, and maybe even possibly open it up at forum, you know, and get some of this information out, so that people could talk about it, and formulate how we want to move forward with. There's a lot of information here, and I don't expect anybody probably looked at it in this first presentation and said, hey, here's the way we want to go, well, I can't right yet, I mean, there's a lot of discussion that needs to be had. But we have a lot of recreational facilities in the town that are currently underutilized, that we could maybe capitalize on and get, you know, some improvements on, and this might be a way to move it forward. Y'all might, may have another way you want to go with it, I don't know. But this is a pretty thorough plan that has a lot of information, and I want to kind of get some guidance from you guys on how you want to move forward.
Yeah, a lot of work's gone into this, so thank you, and Mary?
Mary and Seth have just done phenomenal on this side.
They've done a really nice job, so please.
It's very, very thorough, very thorough.
I have my thoughts, but if you guys want to join in first, it would matter.
I also was appreciative, it was just nice to learn the history of all the different recreational assets that we have here. I knew where the parks were and the different things we have, I didn't know how they all started, and getting a history lesson was great, and I, I'm kind of aligned with you, Commissioner Gray, maybe forming a new group to really sit down and study, make some recommendations on how we can use this stuff, the Fresh Pond, the path around Fresh Pond, and how they could potentially one day link into Naxhead Woods, I thought that was really exciting, and some cool things would happen there. But there's a lot to study and a lot to consider, and, you know, maybe forming a special committee to review it, take it to the planning board, it's a good starting point.
It was a lot of information, as a matter of fact, I think I fell asleep reading it and knocked it off the bed, and it's all in disarray at this moment.
My pages are all out.
It's definitely not in order, but I've been here a fair amount of time, and I wouldn't even be aware of the first two items on the list, so that shows me that we probably could get more uses. I think some signage was indicated or different things, but I think it's a great idea that we open those up and make them more accessible, or at least make them more where people are aware of. Like I say, and even some of the further stuff right here, near the Town Hall, I think that Pavilion was described, I think all that's a great direction to take for the town, maybe move it more south to the West Side. More things to do.
Please don't tell Mary he fell asleep reading it.
It's a lot.
Yeah, Terry and I met a few weeks ago, and he gave me his copy, very similar to what's here, and I spent some time with it, put some sticky notes on it, and some notes, and turned it into Mary, and I, this is probably a combination of those two things. But I agree, we need to give this some special attention, and I'd be okay with forming another group to take a look at it, it worked well for the 44-acre deal where we have this golf course now, and I think that's something we should look at in the future. Meanwhile, I'm going to go back over this again and see what else I can find.
Ashley, you referenced the Bomb Track Study Committee, as you may not be aware, but that was a group that was formed, it was a brand-new group that was formed specifically to look at the use of the Bomb Track, and out of that came priorities, one of those being the disc golf course, another being the dog park that came out of there, so that group, and that was a larger working group than most of our town committees, it would have been 12 or 15 folks, and they prioritized, they looked at, first kind of got a bunch of input of how, what different options could be available for that, and then prioritized, and I could see the same thing happening with this. I think having, taking it beyond just the Street Improvement Committee or Special Projects is great, because I think I would like to suggest that maybe we model the structure and function after the Bomb Track Study Committee, since it's somewhat similar in task, you'd get a lot more perspective. I don't recall though, how we, I know the board appointed the members to those committees, I think we put out an appeal to the public to get folks who are interested to serve on such committee to, I don't know, we had a simple application, we probably had the standard application or something.
Probably, if the board would like, what we could do is bring that information back to you at May meeting, and in the meantime, you could be thinking of people that either you would have in mind, or if you didn't want to take on additional applications, I know, you know, there's applications that you have for other committees, people that might be interested in this as well. But already having the template for the Bomb Track Study Committee will kind of move that along, and we'll be re-inventing that wheel, so that would be easy to do and bring that back to the other.
It's just my fault from that committee was that, that committee would be specifically for this, it would be an ongoing committee.
Right, just like the Bomb Track, as soon as their task of making the priorities and recommendations, when they completed that, it's more the task force, as soon as that task force is completed.
And the reason I was thinking of that was that we had an incident that came up, that there were a lot of comments on social media, and I felt that if we went that route, it would give a lot more people opportunity to get involved, that had that as a specific interest, so I think what you're describing is exactly what we need to do.
And that would be outlined, that the committee is simply for this purpose, and would no longer be an existent after this.
Correct, and I do feel that at the, as an end result, that this needs to get to the planning level, so that we can make sure that it does mesh with all, any other plans that we have, recreational plans, shoreside, whatever. But I just think there was so much information in here, and I'm going to be honest with you, and tell you that my eyes were really open when I went to the Halloween event. I sit back there around Rockon, and I looked, and I said, golly, what a, you know, what a treasure this is back here, and it's really underdeveloped, and, you know, you could have whatever, flea markets, farmer markets, you know, you could have all kinds of activities out there, and it would create a good family atmosphere that I think would be good for the town, so that was what really sparked my interest in it. The disc golf course that you mentioned is, oh, that's a jewel over there, I mean, that's really nice, and, you know, you might be able to do, in conjunction with that, you could do a fitness trail, or, you know, a jogging trail, or whatever, some other type of activity that would really mesh with that pretty good, and that could come out of this committee as well, you know, out of this study and people looking at it. So, that was my drive, and fortunately, we've got Mary here, and she was able to put, her and all the staff put this together, and, I mean, really, it took a lot of hours, but there's a lot of shortfalls and shortcomings that you have to look at too. You know, we're, we have a very limited number of staff, that with the activities that we're doing now, they're really, they're about to the level of what they can, you know, accomplish, so we have to be careful of that as well.
Well, I think I seek consensus to go ahead and have Debbie bring back to our next meeting, the structure of the Bomb Track, and model this after that. We'll do, what you're saying, and thank you.
Thanks.
Anything else this evening?
That was it for me, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
I'll be with you later.
I have one thing, and it's kind of nice that Roxanna was here with the Saving Lives Task Force, because I've been working with them for about two years now, and I've been asked to kind of address, you know, what can we do as a community to, with the vaping crisis that's going on in our high schools and junior highs? This is, while it's a problem in Dare County, it's happening all over the country, and it's a pretty glaring problem to take on, and it's a very hard, where do we start? You know, what can we do for a town and an county to address it? And I had my own list of ideas, and I actually sent it to Mary as well, and asked her to just share her thoughts, and she did a wonderful job, bringing back some recommendations and some more actionable items that we could do here to address the problem. some more actionable items that we could do here to address the problem. And the first one that she brought to mind, which was something that we should, pretty relatively easy fix, is updating our current rules for smoking on town property in town, just in town in general. We have somewhat of an outdated smoking, I guess, code for, in the town, and it pretty much permits, no one is allowed to have any sort of lit cigarette pipe, cigar, or any type of lit, words meant, I guess, tobacco instrument. There's no language that pertains, because of the age, to any sort of vaping products or anything like that. And if there's consensus among our board, I would like to instruct staff to be looking at updating our smoking policy to be a little more modern to address some of the new issues we're dealing with. I don't know how you guys feel about that.
Okay.
And there's more things we're working on. I like to try to filter things through the Saving Life Task Force, really getting them ready to bring public, but our policy on smoking can be addressed pretty quickly, I feel. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
I just want to say that I'm sorry I forgot to call Terry about what shirt he was wearing tonight. No, that's all I have, just the shirt issue. By the way, the video that was playing before the meeting started, I was wearing the shirt. Pretty much chances, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
That is the Commissioner's shirt.
Call me next time.
Commissioner's shirt. Okay, we'll move on to Mayor's Agenda a few things this evening. First, in your packet this evening were two resolutions. The first is a resolution supporting the More Powerful NC Campaign. This is basically providing more support behind the, just combating the opioid epidemic that's just taking not only our community is affected, but communities across the state and nation, and basically pledging our support for the More Powerful NC Campaign as well as other things that we're currently doing and will consider, continue to do ongoing, whether it's medication disposal, just like we heard about tonight, partnering with the post-moon response teams, efforts that we can continue to support in combating the opioid epidemic. So with that, I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution supporting the More Powerful NC Campaign.
Sure.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The second resolution is opposing the North Carolina House Bill 486 that would change the definition of commercial fishing. This board has stood behind for many years any legislation that would be detrimental to our commercial fishing industry. House Bill 486 is another stab at that. It proposes to drastically raise the annual commercial fishing license fee and impose burdensome requirements on commercial license holders. It also tries to redefine the commercial fishing industry and also imposing a certain level of participation when it comes to professional license issuance. So with that, I propose that we, I make a motion that we adopt this resolution opposing North Carolina House Bill 486.
Second.
Wait just a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then just a couple other items I wanted to announce if you haven't seen it already, but please mark your calendars for Monday, May 13th at 10:00 a.m. This will be the ribbon cutting for the Bill Pitt Ocean Access. Can be proud as a board member that this will be the first fully accessible beach access in Dare County. So thanks to our staff who've worked hard to make this a reality. We partnered in part with the North Banks Rotary Club, and this will officially be named after Commissioner Bill Pitt. Those of you who may remember, former Commissioner Pitt was just an advocate, true and true for beach nourishment, and just did so much for the town of Kildaloe Hills. We had the pleasure of serving with him when he was finishing out someone else's term. So excited for this day. So, May 13th at 10:00 a.m., yes. And then those of you who may be interested in the, if you seen outside, across the way, the work that's going on near Aviation Park for our dog park. So work is progressing well. We expect it to be completed late this spring, and as soon as we have the date for our grand opening, we'll put that out on social media and our website. And this will be a puppy dog and person knit together, so we look forward to that grand opening in the not-so-distant future. And then also want to extend, as a board, our congratulations to Sharon Osbrook. She's our accountant in the finance department. She's retiring after 30 years of service to the town of Kildaloe Hills. We had the reception earlier today, and we wish Sharon and her husband, who is a retired KDH fire captain, a wonderful time. They're looking forward to spend lots more time with their children and grandchildren, so we're very happy for Sharon, thank her for service. And that is all I have this evening. Move on to the consent agenda.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. This evening on the consent agenda, we have the minutes from the April 8th, 2019 meeting. Two budget amendments. The first one is to appropriate FEMA Hurricane Florence reimbursement, and the second one is to appropriate additional funds for South Memorial Culvert repair. Number three is recommendation for acceptance of street improvements in the Water Oak subdivision, excuse me, Phase One. Approval of the consent agenda will adopt the attached resolution, which accepts the streets, water mains, right-of-way improvements, which will be eligible for power bill funding. It adopts the official traffic map revisions to reflect the improvements, and it adopts the revised power bill map as well. The traffic map and the power bill are posted in the room, and it's also available on the town's website. Have two public hearings we'd like to request scheduling for the May 13th meeting. The first one is proposed amendment to Chapter 153 zoning, electrical and communication services clarifies communication services, kind of back to what Commissioner Windley was talking about, when, with things changing, needing to be updated, and that's simply what this does. And then second, proposed amendment to zoning telecommunication tower for use guidelines and dimensional requirements to modify setbacks for monopole towers. As you know, we are going to be constructing a monopole up at the fire station area. Staff recommends the board schedule the public hearings, as I said, stated earlier, for the May 13th, 2019 meeting at 5:30 p.m. Approval of the consent agenda will record that direction, and staff recommends approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are going to, as a board, relocate just to the table, just to try to set a more casual note for the public forum. So just give us one moment, and then we'll keep going. Okay, so twice a year, we hold what we call our public forums, and it's a way to kind of break away from the traditional go to the podium and have to speak when you address the board during public comment. We found that sometimes this makes people a little more comfortable and willing to share with the board, so that's why we do this twice a year. We still, and the other difference is you're not locked into a specific timeframe. Typically, if you speak at public comment, we ask if you're speaking as an individual to keep your comments to three minutes, or if you're speaking on behalf of a group to five minutes. So during the public forum, we're not timing. We just ask be respectful of everybody's time, because we want to make sure that everyone who wishes to speak tonight has an opportunity to do so. You're welcome to speak from your seat, especially if you're more comfortable, or you can approach the podium, whichever you prefer. And we still do ask if you don't mind to identify yourself by name and address. We do record this mostly for the sake of, oftentimes we have to follow up or want to follow up with you if we don't have an answer tonight, so we want to make sure we have record to be able to do that. So with that, we'll just start calling from the floor whoever would like to go first. And welcome, Boy Scouts, for being with us tonight. Thank you, guys. Who would like to speak first at this time? Yes, ma'am?
Hi. My name's Martha Vaughn, and I have neighbors with me. We live at 1217 ABCND and 1219 ABCND, which is a cottage court community that was built in 1946. So we've been around a long time, and we're here tonight because we're very concerned about the mini hotels, as we call them, that are approaching on our area and all throughout Kildaloe Hills. We heard tonight about the setbacks, and that was of interest, because as these houses get bigger and bigger, it seems the setbacks get smaller and smaller. I don't know if there's a way we can revisit the density of the housing on these lots, or what we can do as homeowners to protect the integrity of Kildaloe Hills as we know it, and the historical properties that are all around these buildings that are going up. I just, the imbalance is disturbing to all of us, and we just wanted to come forth and let that be known and see if there's anything we can do to help prevent it in the future. Actually, the ones that are going up are multicolored, they don't blend in with the landscape around us, there's no shingling, there's no siding, they stick out like a sore thumb. And as homeowners, we just wanted to come forth and let that be known. Everything said?
Well, I think we hit the right meetings tonight, of course, with that first, the first session, I think the gentleman left seemed to portray what we were interested in saying. I said, well, ours is a cottage court, it's been there for 73 years, same families, it's unbelievable, through the generations. And right next to us, next, well, it hasn't closed yet, the sale, but I can't remember the name of the organization that's behind the property, but rumor has it, this could be a 25-bedroom deal, and it just won't blend with us, we're individual owned cottages. I'd love to see a cottage court go on that property, rather than a 25-story, I mean, a 25-bedroom place. And we didn't know, what do we do, like Martha said, what do we do to challenge that or recommend a cottage court, rather than a, I know they have to get a building permit, what could we do as citizens, for certain citizens, to maybe change what goes in there? Thank you.
This is, I'll tell you, this concept is one the board's been struggling with for the last number of years. Our hands are somewhat tied with what we can do unless we go in and do make a pretty significant change to the ordinance, and we've been struggling with balancing property rights and what that would look like, and how you, you know, how, what is the right definition for that, or what are the right restrictions? And we've had a number of meetings, and we even had a public forum, really trying to specifically get input on that, and so far haven't been able to come up even with a board on specific recommendations that we can all live with. So I think that, I mean, empathetic to, obviously, where you're coming from and your position, there are a large number of people who don't want to see those. I heard from a Realtor just recently, and I'm hoping maybe the market will help settle some of this. I heard from a Realtor just recently that they're not renting like they used to, and so I'm hoping there's some market saturation that maybe impede some of that development. Welcome other comments from the board.
One other thing is, we're not, we're prohibited by state law from limiting the number of bedrooms in a dwelling. There may be other things that the state has in control, but that's one that I know of.
That legislation changed within, past, what, three, four years? Is that right?
It's been within the past five years, and it, you can't control the number of bedrooms, you can't be specific on the appearance or color. You can do, you can do occupancy, but it's...
It just seems to me, since you've worked so hard on the historic commission and getting the houses in Kildaloe Hills that are significantly recognized, and I know you have a tour, and it just helps build the whole community, I hate to see that, you know, sort of...
Evaporate.
Evaporate because of something so modernistic and doesn't fit in with the features of the older homes. I mean, I don't know, as Mary said, you can't require anything about color or whatnot, but you would think that they would have to do something to blend in with what's already there aesthetically.
I think also over the years that when anyone brings up the idea of appearance standards for homes and businesses, and there's quite a lot of resistance to that, because people don't want to be told what color to paint their house, what kind of roof they have to have, a lot of places have to have certain colored roofs, and I don't think the public wants that, although in certain cases, you'd like to be able to do it, but I don't think the public really is in favor of that.
Generally, that's a covenant for a specific neighborhood. They can get away with it, but the town can't really get away with that. So they can put in their covenants, and, you know, I've been to the meetings in all the towns, and they're all fighting this issue. Most of them are deciding to, because they can't limit it by bedrooms, they're decreasing the actual size of the home for those lots to, I think so, sure, it might be 5,000 square foot now, but if you add up your cottage court, how many square foot do you think within all those homes?
They're probably about 1,500 to 1,800 each.
Each, they're smaller, I'm sure, and there's probably, what, five to 10 or...
There are eight cottages.
There's eight cottages, so, you know, that's 10,000 square foot roughly.
Right.
So that's what we've been trying to do, is not limit it to square foot, but break it up to make it more appearance better. Well, you know, one problem you get into is, you know, you've got two people buying lots side by side, one guy builds a big house, the next guy hands on building, you know, the same thing, then you tell them he can't, you're probably looking at a lawsuit, you know what I mean, because you've affected the value of this property. So there's a lot of issues that are really difficult to overcome, and that's why the cottage court thing or cluster homes, what we're calling them now.
Right.
We're really trying to push it, and the gentleman tonight was actually trying to make it easier to do a cluster home by reducing the setback.
Setbacks.
But if you do that, you probably have to let the large home reduce their setback as well, so you're, you know, you're almost...
Catch 22.
You're in a catch 22, exactly. It's a difficult situation.
I mean, how many possibilities there are for houses of 25 bedrooms or more that, do you have any clue?
It's nearly impossible to say.
I've heard that there's...
With central sewage, that, with the central sewage line going down in C12, that possibility, that door opened quite a bit wider, because part of the whole back was the on-site septic, and when that is not required anymore, that opens up.
I'm a pretty, I've heard there's a better...
It allows for, it allows for a lot more house to go on a, on the same block that...
I'll tell you, I think what's really driving it is the wedding situation, you know, in our whole area. I mean, it's become a wedding mecca, basically. Hopefully, all that will hit a limit, because it's really getting to the point now... because it's really good to the point now, you can go to, oh, Italy or Hawaii or someplace almost cheaper than you can come here and get married. So, maybe that'll have some effect on it.
Well, this year, the, the reports from the wedding expo is dramatically down in numbers. So, who knows? I mean, there may be, like I said, the market may be shifting a little with what people are looking for. I, I will say, though, I don't want you to feel like coming here was not worth your time. And I don't think we have great answers, but it is good to still share your opinion. And even like tonight, we had a big decision about setbacks. So, it's important to know where people stand. And also, it gives an opportunity to recognize that one decision we may make related to one person standing up here has implications on a much broader perspective. And so, keeping that in mind as we make decisions, but also hearing from the public is really important. So, appreciate you guys sharing with us, meeting with us.
We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Listening to us.
Who would like to speak next? Yes, Natalie?
Hi there. My name is Natalie Tinter. I serve on a few committees for the Town of Kildalville Hills, as well as the Board of Directors for the Association of Realtors and the Young Professionals Group for the state and local real estate agents. I also own four properties in the Town of Kildalville Hills in the unincorporated area. One of the things I wanted to come here and just talk about today, it's not a sexy issue, but it is telecommunications towers. And it's something that we talked about for the upcoming discussion. And it's something that I just wanted to bring to mind as I feel like replacement towers and 5G towers are coming up in our area pretty fast. I've seen it all around. This is what a 5G cellphone tower looks like in our area. They are replacing some towers, as well as some new permits coming through, I believe, the town and different areas. It's not really aesthetically pleasing. One went right next to our commercial building that we spent about $80,000 renovating, and that was kind of hard to handle at the moment. But I also wanted to show some alternatives as we get new requests coming in for the 5G cellphone towers coming to our area. According to the telecommunications website, they should be about every 500 feet. So, this is what cars are going to be driving on, any kind of smart home that are going in your housing and all of that stuff. So, there's no interrupted service. So, 5G networks are kind of coming in. It's the next generation of towers that we're going to see. So, with that being as close and as many that they want to ultimately roll out, I just think it's important to think about incorporating that into the existing infrastructure for our town. So, like, we have all the light poles down the highway and everything like that. Just really thinking about the aesthetics of our town and our visitors and all the poles and towers and all the other obstructions we have leading into the view of our beach, I think it's important, instead of putting up these new towers that are bigger, and they carry lots of warning signs on them, they carry some pretty hefty hardware on the sides. This thing is huge in person. I think it would be, should be one of the top priorities on how we're going to incorporate this into our town and then just thoughtfully handling it going forward. It's my issue. Thank you for listening. Thank you for allowing us to have some public comments here.
Yeah, Natalie, thank you. And I know you've shared some emails with the board with, on the same topic. And obviously, we'll be discussing it at our, our next meeting. So, I appreciate the work that you've been doing and the research you've been doing as well.
Before I even heard about these things, I don't know how many people knew they were coming, but I didn't until very recently, thanks to you. And I, I can be corrected if I'm wrong, but the government had preempted a lot of control that we would have over those by saying that whatever the state allows, for instance, we can't override what the state allows. So, we have very little options on these. We have some options, but I don't know what they are. I'm sure they're limited. But the thing with the bedrooms is the state arbitrarily said you can't limit the number of bedrooms. So, we're stuck. We can't do anything about that. And it's the same case here. I think we could talk about doing it aesthetically, like you said, with the pole. I've seen some that are actually screened by vegetation.
Yeah.
False vegetation, just to make them look better. Camouflage, so to speak. That's something we're going to be dealing with. I appreciate you bringing it up too.
I think new permits coming in would be a way to kind of facilitate some kind of architectural control of them. I know, I think that we are allowed to manage any new permits and negotiate that according to our town ordinances. And then, they're going up so fast in the replacement of these existing poles, you know, they're kind of using that same process to put these new towers in. And I sold a house in Kitty Hawk earlier this year that had a new pole installed. Dominion went to go apply power for it, and it wasn't properly grounded, and it caught their yard on fire. And that was actually a story I was listening to on the news this morning as well, that with the infrastructure in California, their privately-owned telecommunications department has had this issue so much that they said it's cheaper to declare bankruptcy than to go back and fix their infrastructure because it's already out there. It's already rolled out. It's already there. There's nothing else they can do. They rather pay the lawsuits, handle bankruptcy as a private company that's, you know, installing these. I think it's just, it's going to be tough. It's going to be something big and something new that's unrolling. And anything that we can get ahead of it before the government puts more regulations on how we're doing it, any new permits that are coming in for 5G cellphone towers in our community, it would be something to consider.
Natalie, have you done any research on what other towns or cities have done to address this issue? I think Kerry, for example, had pretty strict rules on just aesthetics of her sign. Can't have a sign for business more than a few feet off the ground. It'd be neat to see what those places are doing. They may have some good ideas to check into. To your knowledge, do you have any idea what percentage of these poles are newly installed poles or replacing something that's already existing?
I think replacing something that's already existing is what they're rolling out right now. And then, according to the telecommunications websites and the information I've gathered online, it's ultimately, it should be every 500 feet, which, you know, that would be before the highway and the, the beach road. We would need a tower in the middle everywhere there. So, within the realm of, there will be the next rollout of new, you know, infrastructure coming in different areas. And in Heathrow, I had a colleague at Dominion that I spoke with, and they tie that into the existing infrastructure that they have there, you know, where we don't have poles. I think that that is something that, whether we can get a light or, you know, something that's added value to our community, I think that would be an improvement versus a detriment when we start seeing these coming on, you know, easements and things like that. Yeah, but I would definitely be into leaving and looking into getting more research on that if, if that was needed.
I was actually on committee, Natalie, and before that, we had looked at the poles and trying to get, get as many off the bypass as we could. And I'm old Mike, and I had this discussion a long time ago, starting a fund just to get the major power poles down at some point 20 years' time or whatever. But we, we had a really, we, I think they took down maybe 50 poles, the wood ones. But we even looked at trying the same thing, putting a light on the existing poles. And we had a really difficult time even there. That pole you showed, you showed the picture of, looks way nicer than the other one. Looks smaller, too, so I don't know if that's, you know, a possibility or not, if they have to be a certain size to do the job. But anytime we could combine, my point is a light with a pole like you showed or something like that, and just the less poles we have, the better. I guess those are all Dominion easements? Is that how it goes?
They are Dominion easements. They hook up the power to them. The signs on the pole are Verizon or whatever telecom equipment is on it.
I was thinking maybe in the future, we're a very near CAC meeting, maybe we could do some research to look at maybe some of the municipalities have done to address this and talk about it. If there's anything we feel that has value, we wanted to, more commissioners for consideration. That's a thought. A lot of research, they live in a lot of different towns.
My only fear is timing and how fast that they've put these new structures up. I mean, it was a matter of a week, and we were going to our job site and noticed, hey, there's a new pole. Okay, there's a couple more things on that pole. And it's just going up really fast. So, I just wanted to put a face to it, bring it to your attention. Just as, because I know once we put things to the committee, it trickles back down, and then I'll have to trickle back up. And the way things are going and the issues that my clients have seen at their properties from these subcontractors putting these poles in and, and how fast things are going, I think that it's just important to kind of get a handle on it.
Was the lot in Kitty Hawk in a neighborhood or was it on...
It was on Sanderland across from East Hardware.
On main turf there, though.
It is on the, the side street. It's not on the highway. It's on a, the secondary street off Sanderland.
I was just going to mention that one of the early tasks of the CAC was to look into the whole, whole thing. Skip, I think 18 poles is what Dominion took down as a result of having those new huge aluminum poles down the bypass as well as over on Bay Drive. Dominion, all I can say is they have so much power. And they take our money and, and use it in ways whether we like it or not.
Well, fight to have a pole, not get a bypass. That was back in the 80s.
In 1999, we were given permission to have the power company deduct the dollars a month, $2 a month from residential and $5 a month from commercial and have that money go into a fund to put the distribution lines underground. And it was, it was never initiated. And if it had been, the amount of money that, I don't remember the figure, but the amount of money that would have been in that at this time, for instance, we put that whole beach road with utilities underground and maybe started working on some of the side street. Couldn't do anything about the bypass with the big pole. It just never came to fruition. We were pushing pretty hard for it back then. Kind of got what we wanted, but then they never initiated the actual collection of funds.
They don't look it, but I think, I think you're right in what you said, Commissioner, with the state, with their little weekend. I think you're right in what you said from the information I saw.
I just said that five years ago, it was $1 million a mile, the cost.
Just about what it was.
Having given up that option, that's what Dominion said it would cost to get those lines on, the ones they could put underground.
That is the, you know, topic we're speaking on next, next meeting is, is very much in conjunction with this. But a lot of legislature is going to tell you that in a state right of way, there's very little we can do at all. So, most of the ones, you know, along 158 and the beach road, there's little we can even require for aesthetics. Already in our ordinance, we're, we require new service to be underground. And that's something we're clarifying, that it's all telecommunications, not just, you know, not just health. So, that's something we're, we're thinking ahead of. But the House bill is going to, the Utilities Commission is ramming this down everybody's throat across the state because this is where the, they want consistent service. But they do allow for localities to do some sort of regulation for possibly aesthetics. But, you know, I don't know how you created, you can get putting an antenna on an existing pole, what you can really do to make that look pretty personal. Oh, yeah, we'll be talking about that next month.
Who else would like to speak?
I'll give my quick drilling rant.
Go ahead, please do.
Just don't forget, May 14th, we still know nothing. What it's worth, the offshore drilling, next offshore drilling lease proposal plan has been in limbo now since who knows when. We've been expecting a new plan for two months easily. They booked the bone open, Bureau of Ocean Injury Management booked the Kildalville Hills. Yeah, Ramada, thank you. More than two months ago, when Mayor Davies and I went up to DC, we, on February 28th or whatever it was, was it February 20th? We already knew about that then. They've yet to drop the plan. We've been waiting ever since. We thought it would happen a month ago. We're now, what, three weeks away from the actual meeting? Last time around, when they did the original plan, they waited, I guess it was two weeks prior. We're expecting by the 30th, I mean, who knows? They like to do these things on Fridays. Maybe on Friday, well, no. I thought they'd do it on Earth Day, to be honest. I was so waiting, I was waiting for a complete finger-in-the-eye type of move. Rile up your base, piss off the opposition, what else? I mean, perfect. But, yeah, so we're waiting, but it's time to spread the word. I mean, we might be wrong. I hope we're wrong. I'd love to tell everyone to take a day off and have it be totally useless or worthless, or actually would be worthless. But I'm sure we would rally either way, but...
Matt, the time again for that rally?
Well, we don't know yet because it's, 3:00 to 7:00 is the actual time of the, when they will have the bone open house in Ramada, where you would go and basically get pitched a bad, a bad deal. Then you'd be, we would be next door at the Comfort Inn at a specific time for a specific, you know, rally with the number of speakers. And I would hope more people that can even fit in the building or even park in the lot. I, you know, if they, if they come, I would, I would ask, ask everyone to shut down, put a sign on the door, say, "Close for offshore drilling", and let it be a rice message of just how bad this can be before it ever happens. Because it really comes down to taking a day off to reserve a whole lot of days in the future. But I wouldn't expect a whole lot of real communication or help from this current administration right now. It just doesn't seem the way they operate, particularly on this issue. I guess they were supposed to be giving Bernhard, is swearing him in. I thought it was Tuesday. I've been so busy, I haven't been paying attention. But as I said, we're, we're waiting for him to get sworn in. If that hasn't, once that happens, that maybe when we start to hear anything. But of course, there's been a lot of pushback from other states. But from what I understand, nobody's heard of anything in any other states than having any hotels booked. They've got three dates here in North Carolina. I wouldn't be surprised if they said, you know, they opened up 97% of the coast. Wouldn't be surprised if they'd come back and go, look all we want, this one little chunk off of Hatter Island. And if you've got any...
It'd look like such a great compromise.
Exactly. If you have any influence with anybody in our, in our state legislature and our, and our national legislature, you know, in the Senate, Tillis, Burr, whoever, somebody, you know, Walter Jones was our only ally in this fight, and we unfortunately don't have him anymore on, on that level. Thank you, guys. Thank the counties. Thank multiple counties. But I think this is one that's just going to, they're going to sneak it up on us. And so, we can't guard them. And of course, once we do get the plan, then our plan from a cert writers' perspective, and Don't Jolene See, the whole coalition, the Coastal Federation, is to really get the word out because then the comment period opens. And then when you start getting people knocked, they can do something. Because right now, nothing can go on public record. And then we'll have 90 days, and then they'll take that back, and they'll reduce, they'll produce a final plan. And once they produce the final plan, that goes to Congress for approval. That is not something that we get to have a public statement on outside of your usual, ask your representatives to, to speak out and to vote no really.
And Matt, you brought up there'll be a public comment period. One thing that we heard loud and clear when we were in DC back in February was person, very person-specific emails and public comment is what they want to hear. Change letters, big form letter type that everybody signs on are not effective. And they also want not just the heartfelt, "Don't drill", you know, they, they want the science and, and data. And so, we have a lot of data here to be able to share on the economic impact and what you're risking to lose based on, you know, nothing. They, they can't quantify what any potential gain is. So, you know, we'll probably have some, I'm sure CertRider will do a fantastic job of putting out some soundbites that people can use in their public comment. But just take a moment to say, please, consider sending a very personal public comment with some facts and data in it so your voice can be heard as loud as possible.
And start spreading the word now. Like, I've had people, a friend of ours from Raleigh was down. We said something, they have a house in, house on the beach. We're over there hanging out, and they're like, "You said what now?" It's like, oh, this has happened. So, if you know people who are inland, I mean, this is not an issue just people live here. It's an issue for all those 25-room homes should right now be waking in their boots. Because I would wonder what the note on that thing is. I would not want to be seeing that thing sitting empty for, you know, a year. So, no one books, people cancel weddings over hurricanes that happen now. Can't imagine what they would do over a substantial spill. White, yeah, tar balls and white dresses don't do well together. That's my usual rant.
Thank you. Thanks for...
Thanks for all that you do at the Surfrider.
All you guys do, appreciate it.
Who else would like to speak? We have our Boy Scouts. Anything you guys want to share?
Trip 116.
Trip 116, is that where you guys are from? Everybody's the same trip?
Citizenship in the community, bear badge.
There you go, good.
Good deal, good deal.
Has it been interesting tonight or just really boring?
Some interesting things.
Good, good. It's a lot to sit through, but that's great. Had a lot of something interesting. Yeah, good.
I remember seeing some of your faces last weekend in Mandi, I went to see from his one, Governor's Volunteerism Award. We're happy, my son's in Coast Scout Pack 116, so I'm pretty close on everything. And that was a proud day for, for all the scouting in Deer County, so thank you guys for having me.
This is, this is our future. It's our future commissioners, future business leaders.
All right, anyone else? Otherwise we'll move on, let you go have dinner and enjoy the rest of your Wednesday evening.
I must say, when Dave Alec mentioned the volunteers, I have the National Park, Sue Kelly has been one of those for many years. Thank you, Sue.
It's fun.
You can be down here and see her uniform and body on lighthouse.
I had the opportunity to ride with Sue to deliver meals on wheels a few weeks ago. You are like volunteer extraordinary.
Got to keep busy.
Got to keep it.
Keep busy or die.
Mayor, I'd like to, I just want to make sure that everybody's aware that it's Bike Week and be careful and, and watch out for bikers. I know I was coming home today and there was an accident right out here on the bypass. And sometimes they can't be seen. They get into special little spots where you can't see them in your car. So just take that extra second to take a look for bikers because there's a lot of them down here and they need to be safe. Appreciate everybody, appreciate everybody being there with gentlemen.
As others mentioned, that's the same thing, the opposite, day third and fourth, yeah, that'd be a rod, car, be a lot of antique cars coming down here on the beach. It might be a little noisy, but they're supposed to be good group of people, just want y'all be aware of it, that they will be that.
Thank you, yeah, Mike was here at one point speaking on that, so, yeah. All right, well then a motion to adjourn with the order. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All of us in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you all.